So we're showing you Austin.
I need motivation.
Austin, looking for the clutch?
Yeah.
Come on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and eternal.
You can, you can.
Sure. Yeah, no, no one would come out.
There's nowhere to park.
That's what we have in plan.
I could've parked in my driveway.
We need the, the vehicle.
Oh, come on.
Couldn't get that to drive his SUVs, Jenny.
So I'm supposed to eliminate off-street parking near 24 South Buckout Street. Uh, hey, that's your Roy.
How are you doing?
Welcome to the front of Roy. Um, so we did get the, uh, the drawing and your letter. So I think you have a little bit of background, but, uh, happy to, uh, happy to present your, your version of events.
Okay, well, basically, um, we've been here six years and, um, when we moved in, it wasn't too much of a problem except a little bit of tides. But to see recent business and commerce, which is good, but for the people who live on that block, there's parking is kind of very tight and non-existent. Um, and, um, so I've actually had this plan a few years back, you know, I just had a background on mine because I anticipated more stuff going on and, um, should've done it sooner. But, um, basically, yeah, the traffic seems to be, at times, people are agitated, you know, there's a tight street as it is. One of my tenants got the whole left side of his car smashed at night. So, yeah, these things have happened, hit-and-run scenario. Police never recovered any evidence or, or never really caught the perpetrator, possibly DUIs. But, um, yeah, it's a little bit of a safety concern. Um, basically, we just need to have, we have three apartments. We only live in one of them and your lack of parking is definitely huge as of the last year or two years this got more tight. And we have space to the right side. There used to be a two-car garage from Cary House or something like that. It'd been torn down a long time ago and so we anticipate on putting four spaces on our property and that will eliminate two, take four extra, two extra cars off the street. So there's a gain for everybody on the block, not just for us.
So, um, if I remember correctly, I circulated the information that you had given me, um, to the board and, uh, there were a few questions that came up, um, that had to do with, I guess, uh, information about, about who's living, I don't mean personally, but the number of people that are living there and the number of cars that they currently have. Um, because I think there was a concern that, uh, if you build four more spaces, uh, does it just mean that the people who live there are gonna have more cars? You know what I mean? Like, as a, just a, just a broad comment. So maybe describing who's there, what the patterns are, what would be helpful.
Yeah, okay, three families. Um, family downstairs has only one vehicle. Um, the family on the middle floor has two vehicles and then my wife and I have two vehicles. We have two children, but they're part teenagers.
But they grow.
So, I mean, there's no teenagers residing there, or at least within the next five years if the people stay there, there still won't be teenagers, so the additional vehicles, yeah, that's, it's adequate.
So it's, so right now, there's gotta five vehicles?
Five vehicles.
Okay.
So four will be up, so that's, there's, it makes a big difference.
Do you have, um, do you or any of your residents, uh, renters have a residential parking permit?
Yes.
So you have?
Yeah.
So you have two for the two vehicles that you have and then your renters have ones for theirs?
Correct.
Okay.
So Larry, remind me again, have parking permits? If you have off-street parking, are you still eligible for on-street parking permits?
Uh, it, it adjusts the number of, uh, permits that you're eligible for. So I, I can, let me pull up the exact sample that I was.
I remember seeing that, but that's, but how does it apply to a multifamily house?
I think it's by household.
Each household.
As a leave, so, yeah. Let me look if I get the right wording.
But, you know, my, my basic concern is we're taking away two, two public spots that anybody can park and giving four spots that are only limited to the people in that household.
Right.
And if those people are no longer able to park on the street, that's something that I think is worth thinking about. If those people have the same rights to park on the street and we're taking two spots where everybody else, it's something else to think about.
I, we also had a question, if it absolutely needs to be two street spots. We, we were on the downtown subcommittee of the comprehensive plans. We were walking around the DPW site Monday and we're right next to your property, so we peeked. Um, is, could it not be done with eliminating one parking space, one street space?
Um, not really because of the slope and not covering too much area. Like, if I built a driveway and had it down below there, I'd have to do a lot more dirt work, which would cause tree removal, soil disturbance, and which would be less beneficial for others, you know, not just us, versus if we had four facing inward.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So you're gonna have no.
Yeah, they would be in a row, it'd be safer, they'd go in and out without having to worry about trying to turn around or trying to move around.
No, they have some.
Yeah. Said by far, this is the best means. We have a possibility of squeezing five in there, but that's a little bit too tight. I don't see the reason to cover too much green area. You know, we want to have some yard too, you know.
So are each of these spots, the, these vertical sections, are each a spot?
Yeah.
And there's a parking spot with to pull in to those spots?
Yeah. And as the way the parking spaces are in first place.
Yeah, that would be correct. Well, I know, I saw that. And the existing cutout is really only one, like the far right side of the driveway?
Yeah.
And with that existing cutout, you wouldn't be able to pull in and?
Not, not with the way it is because we would have, the way the slope is, you have, there's not a huge, it drops off and you get about halfway through the lot. It takes a big drive and it would just be cost pivotant, plus it would just involve a lot more dirt being brought in and tree removal. I do like the trees that are there. I intend on keeping all, retaining all existing.
So would people be pulling into park and then they would have to back out for the buckout?
Yeah.
It's basically exactly what you have across the street here.
Yeah, it's pretty calm.
There's two spaces and one, and it eliminated one on-street space to create two off-street ones that are available. But same, same idea.
In addition, when you're going in or out at a straight angle, it's easier to see versus if you're at a 45, that's a lot more difficult to maneuver in and out.
But are the cars on the first and last spots gonna be able to pull directly in or, I mean, it seems like those two parking spaces, which will be eliminated, are basically facing the two middle spots.
Correct.
With a little bit into the other.
There's a little bit into each side, but there's enough room.
They're gonna have to maneuver it back out.
Yeah, we allow about 20 to 22 feet here. 16, so that should be more than enough. If somebody gets a huge Escalade or something like that, we don't have those kind of tenants. Simple people, they rent for less.
So to, to answer the question about residential parking permits and how it gets adjusted for on-street or off-street spaces, um, basically for any, for, if there's one or two vehicles in a household, um, then the number of off-street spaces associated with that household would be, uh, would directly offset those number of vehicles on a one-to-one basis. So, for example, and this one's a little tricky because there's four spaces, but let's arbitrarily assign them to, to these households, you know, in some fashion, right? So, uh, one family has one vehicle and if we assume that one of those spaces is associated with that family, they'd be entitled to zero permits for on-street parking. Now, they can still park on the street, but only within the hourly limits during the day. Uh, another family has two vehicles. If we took the next two spaces, assigned it to that family, that would, that would be zero permits allowed, so it's one-to-one. Uh, the last family, of course, uh, has two vehicles also and only one of those spaces would be assigned to them, so they would be entitled to one permit. Because I, as you ran through the existing conditions right now, there's five vehicles, so that makes, that all makes sense. It's all, these spaces would completely offset the number of permits that they'd be entitled to, that they aren't entitled to currently right now.
So for, the four new spaces would, we could get that four permits?
Yes.
Some of the resident, I'm sorry?
Yes.
As things stand right now.
Yes, so some of the residents who have two permits might get to keep one, but, but we're still getting back four permits essentially.
Right.
When you, but if somebody moves in between cars?
Well, yeah, but that, right. I'm not, I'm not gonna make his argument for him, but that can happen whether we have spaces off-street or on-street, doesn't, you know, in other words, things can change regardless. And if that does happen, if, if, if a family moves in and has, you know, three vehicles, which is covered here, the relationship gets, uh, well, again, we have to, we'd have to see how many spaces are assigned to that particular household and the number of on-street permits would be reduced. So it's, I mean, it's.
So can a household ever have three, um, permits if they have three cars and no, uh, on, off-street? Or is there just eventually a limit?
No, there's a limit of two.
A limit of two, okay.
That's the only variation.
Never goes to three.
Right, that's the only variation. Yeah, three, three household vehicle with zero off-street spaces gets two permits.
Yeah.
So I think my, my two questions are, or one, actually, one question, one point. Um, one question is how full the spots are, uh, you know, how, how full the on-street spots are during the day. So this would take cars off the street and it's not super more at night because people probably can put it out during the day. So, you know, is it always, is every spot always full on buckout? Um, and then secondly, I think in some ways this does add to safety, not just for your tenants, but I always find if you go into buckout and there's cars coming the other way, you need a spot to pull off. So this is, just have another spot where you could kinda duck in while the other guy comes flying down. It's, it's not a bad thing either because I find that there's that dance on buckout where you pull up and pull up and pull.
It really changes based on the time of day and the day. I mean, sometimes there's a few parking spots up on, uh, South Buckout, sometimes there's not, I mean, because it's six-hour spots, right? So if you're looking to go into the city, the city late, uh, there's sometimes spots and sometimes not, it just depends. Uh, can't guarantee.
This is all in, oh, sorry, this is all in the context of our, of discussion a month ago or several weeks ago about possibly changing the sixes to twos and other changes. I don't know if you heard that, um, work session, but in the whole downtown area discussing whether or not the current amount of time allowed, um, is gonna change. It's in the context, it's not directly related to this because if you're off it, if you're off, off the street, you're off the street, you don't need to worry about that. Uh, but it does kind of change, you know, and, and then there's also the discussion about how this is a range, would there, would there be one way on that street? So all these things are kind of swirling around, you're just kind of landing in the middle of this, um, but.
We were talking about that also. Yeah, of course, we could not decide which way, you know.
Yeah, I think it's.
Never mind.
Same, but.
There's an argument for both.
As long as, as long as it's not that way.
But, you know, it's true, they need to constantly pull over now, you know, you just hope you've got a good neighbor coming the other way and whoever sees the spot first will pull into it.
Right, and I would say to, to Brian's question, I rarely see a spot on buckout street.
Exactly, I know that's why.
During the day, you know, during the day.
Right, exactly.
During the day, every spot on buckout is taken, whether it's from the Astro Buck building and the workers there, people going in to yoga.
I have to, I do have to disagree because I, but it's later, it's usually later in the afternoon, like around two-ish or later, there's spots.
So that's after the people coming in at nine, they're just up there.
Six, I guess that's what it is.
But after about five or six, it's self.
Oh, yeah.
It's totally packed full.
But I've got two blocks, no, I got used to it, but I'm not so much concerned about myself from up there with other people and our kids.
Would it be helpful if we do a, a survey over a period of time for you to get some better data?
I think that would be helpful.
A survey?
Right, we'll do it a couple of times during the day, you know, at mid-morning and mid-afternoon.
How full the street is.
Oh, oh, that particular.
We need that information anyway. I'm gonna just talk about making it, you know, one, one way. But if, if we're gonna go ahead with this, I think we really have to get all the information. So.
How long do you think that might take?
A month? No, wouldn't take long. I mean, we could, we'd do a survey over the course of a week, isn't that, the only issue is we need to wait till the snow's cleared up.
So we get an accurate picture of the whole thing. Can I put a limit on that in any way, on the usage of that? I mean, I don't know what, what are we doing when we're, we're just approving removal of two spots, is that it? Is there a way?
That has to pass, pass the planning.
That's the only question.
That's a planning portion.
Right. Also, have you considered just thinking about the snow, that when the planes come through, they're gonna block any?
Yeah, we all know that.
They're blocked in anyway.
Okay. So it's not, it's not a.
So clear the stakes with that, because now I have to take the responsibility from.
I, I guess it's not at the point of this, but is, um, were you asking something to Mark? I couldn't even hear you, sorry.
I was just wondering if there's a way that, as part of the concession, to be able to put a limit, up a limit on the total number of cars that can be in the, uh, in the three units.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, that's not our question, it's the planning board, but, I mean.
I don't know if they ever.
Does that accomplish if you call?
No, we can eliminate, we can, we have a limited number of permits. I don't think we can, I don't think you wanna be in the position, and I'm lucky, I can't rent to anybody with more than two cars or one.
Yeah, typically it's either, most of the people have two vehicles, some occasions one.
Or the apartments.
You know, even the ones that take the train and work in the city, she wants to be able to park, either have a space to park or something, still, you know, you still have to get a permit by a limited, yeah, need, that it makes it more convenient.
I was gonna ask, and maybe this only happens in the planning board stage, but is there any communication with the neighbors about this plan? Is there gonna be feedback?
Yeah, they're, they're all for it. They're for it. They'd say it's great because the people across the street, you know, there's a poor flex and they've gotta go down the street often, you know, they have no lot of big parking either.
So they see it as a net gain in terms of the public because they see.
Two less competition.
Two less cars as competition.
It's not huge, but it's, it's significant enough to make a difference. At least for them, they can park right nearby, you know, their building and not have to lock two and three blocks, depending on what your hours are, of course.
The letters from neighbors supporting this might, might.
Might make a difference, yeah. I know, we, 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 we think, what, you know, it's good for the public, you know, and then what's good for individuals, but we're always kind of thinking about, you know, the grand plan of what's good for the public, so that makes a big difference to me too. But I think your, your point about having some information about.
We'll gather some information.
How many spaces are available? Um, I'm certainly not, you know, philosophically against it if, if there's a net gain for people in the area to have less competition for those, um, for parking on the street.
I would, I would agree. I mean, clients would be looking at this quite favorably, but I would like the information and letters of support from your neighbors would be helpful. Have you considered two-story parking? Just a joke.
Right, renters, only those who take the train and shop at Jordains and don't ever have to go to a big grocery store. Just a joke.
All right, so we'll, we'll gather some information. I, I would say, given the conditions out there, it's probably a couple of weeks by the time we gather the information.
Okay.
Um, that, that'll give you a chance to gather a couple of letters and have them sent in.
Yeah, there's some tenants, so they'll probably just, I don't know, write letters, but I could certainly ask.
Yeah, we'll do our best and then.
I'm getting an email, it doesn't have to be like a formal.
It's a guy on the corner across the street and he only's got four little garages in front of his place, but he doesn't use them, he parks his car right in front of them. But he doesn't really park in a designated parking space, but that's what he's, he does. So, so he doesn't have anybody to compete against because he uses the space right there in front.
Ah.
Yeah, the, the usual, um, the clerk that goes through there, you know, periodically, yeah, he knows the cars too, so.
Yeah, in terms of getting a ticket for parking in front of the driveway?
Yeah.
Oh, that's another issue.
Well, then it's his own, it's his own garage.
Very interesting.
Very good, well, we appreciate it.
Okay, so.
So I guess more info?
Email or something? Yeah, you have my email address, I emailed it before, so, yeah.
And people have to, just email, it doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be.
Or it's, or it's, yeah.
Oh, have to faster.
Whatever, whatever's easiest to add.
Dale, right, most of the book, right.
No, no, who writes?
Yes. My wife really wants, she's been bugging me about it for a couple of years, you know. Says get on it because if you wait too long, it's just gonna be harder and harder, you know. We had other repairs and all of some expenses, but, so, that's pretty important now. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't.
Yeah, no, we appreciate hearing.
The safety of life.
Excellent.
Especially, we lost a couple of mirrors on our cars too, so stuff happens and not everything. Because of the, I think it's mainly the width of the street or it's a non-yielding, you hear about all, so you live right there, you're here.
Well, it always gets amazing when you have the guy, because he continues to go, you know, 35 miles an hour when he sees another car coming, you know, it's like.
Yeah.
Like checking every time.
Crazy, but especially around around five, six o'clock period, that's when you have to be most careful and you have to be careful if you even open your door.
Yeah.
Better make sure it's clear. If you see somebody way back there, if I tell my doors open, he's like, right there.
Well, we're trying to work on speed in this village too, so, uh, you're, you're allowed to get license plate numbers of people who are speeders and tell our police, um, and they send a letter, uh, notice to the person that they should be slowing down.
All right. Thanks for your, nice to meet you. Very welcome, yeah.
Now onto the funnest, budget workshop.
Big turnout tonight.
Yeah. This is the, um, recreation, so there we go here. Can you contest them out there? Okay, recreation, so we can start through the other way.
So, I think, I think a quick overview is that the tentative budget.
I have extra.
T tentative budget will be released on the 20th.
And Brenda, do you have the stuff you sent us at home, the overall?
Yes, that's coming the other way.
That's coming up, except.
No, I didn't get my lead yet.
Did everybody got a, everybody got a rec budget?
We have a rec budget, I don't have any. We need one more of these.
We don't, okay.
Rec these into a recs.
And do you need, oh, you, you still.
Do we have rec?
There's no tab, put it with the bar.
Oh, I forgot. Don't worry about it. I forgot.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, if we're gonna look at it tonight, I'm not gonna send it in yet. Put it in the front if you want.
So I guess we can, even if we want to open to our first page, we're going to the door with the timing. Um, we're at the, uh, March 15th, uh, obviously the, the rec is coming in tonight. Um, building and theater, I think we thought that their budgets were basically unchanged.
Yeah.
And we've kinda talked about the building department revenues, uh, a couple times at least, how we got a nice bump from the RZ Country Cup project, we expect a nice bump next year from Kid Arno, and then after that, we don't see the big project on the horizon much, not yet. Uh, so, you know, while the revenues have been very strong, we don't think there's a lot of room in, in the building department to increase revenues. Uh, the theater budget, I think, was almost, uh.
Unchanged.
Unchanged here over the years, so we let Greg have a night off since he's here so many other nights.
It's not to say we can't have them come in at some point and get it up.
Exactly right.
But try to squeeze it in before the budget crosses.
Timing for the budget. Uh, and then next, next week, next Monday, you know, we're gonna release our tentative budget. Um, so that's, uh, so we're kind of near the end of the beginning. Um, so, uh, you know, I think by this time, we typically have kind of a more, more finalized budget. I think hopefully we'll come out of here tonight with a more finalized budget. Um, the bad news is we're still as of, you know, as of eight, uh, 7:30 tonight, uh, over the tax cap. So we gotta, in my opinion, we have to find some, some cuts. Um, we're over the tax cap even using all of our carry forward, so we probably don't wanna get just under the cap, but maybe add, wanna add to a little room as well, so. That's my summary, friend, I hope I did still like your time.
No, it was fine, it was great, it was great. Um, you know, the board hasn't been working on the budget, you know, meeting after meeting, but doesn't mean we haven't been. So as things become more clear to us as far as, um, competitive retirements and then medical, it needs to pay new medical policies for the new employees, that's become a little clearer and there's been some shifting there, so we're able to come down. Um, I think what I'll do is draw your attention to, uh, this package, because it has been really talking points, uh, before I start jumping around. Um, what this sheet here is showing us is, uh, the last two columns is the year that we're gonna be adopting. And you can see in the last column is the tax levy or the expenditures and the levy that we're looking at to adopt right now with the new assessment role. So this is the first year where the full assessment has kicked in. So you can see that in the full assessment value, that how dramatically the tax rate has dropped from 298,000 last year per thousand to, it would be 7.86 dollars per thousand.
Oh, wow.
That's because of the new assessment.
It's 1.8 billion dollars worth of assessed values.
That's right.
From 45 million.
Yeah, so the, the presentation of this is, is, uh, there's probably a few different ways it could be presented, um, but the easiest thing for you to think about is that there are probably not a single resident or maybe just a very few handfuls of residents who will actually see their tax bill go up by the amount that you adopt your, by which you adopt your budget. So if you adopt a budget that goes up 3%, for example, there's probably only one or two people in this village who will actually see their tax will go 3%. Many will be much more than that and many will be much less than that. So, um, so showing it with this, this nice little number here, you know, in the bottom right-hand corner, it's kind of, I don't wanna say it's meaningless, but at least it's, it's, it's some measure to give you an idea of what's happening with this budget. What's happening with the people's tax bills at home is totally different and, of course, out of our control here. Um, so it just means that presentation's a little bit unusual.
So, so I, I think the bottom line is if we focus on the tax levy number, um, you know, the 14.098 million versus 13.675, um, that's kind of the net increase if you add up, you know, kind of these expenditures less the revenues. Um, so that's what we have to actually levy to make ourselves flat. Um, so it, it's, the percentage actually isn't that different than if you, it's, it's gonna be the same percent, pretty much, but it's just.
Yeah, because you're dividing by the same number.
It's just a more relevant number, say the tax levy went up by 3% as opposed to the tax rate went up because people's tax rates are gonna be all over the board, more so this year than any other year. It's always different, a little different, but this year it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be very different, so.
And can we say something in general about the staying under the tax cap? Now, this all connects back to the checks that people get in the mail from the state. Can you summarize what that situation is?
Right, well, so, I mean, I, I don't remember exactly what year we're in, I think we're probably in the final year, but.
Right.
There were two.
Issue.
Two things that went on in this state government in the last, you know, six years or so. First is the tax levy cap, which, you know, we've been dealing with, uh, throughout and we'll be getting into that deeper here. Um, but then, uh, a couple of years ago, there was a tax freeze that was implemented by the state and it, and they tied, they made it so that, um, as long as your local community stayed within the tax cap and they came up with a, a plan, an efficiency plan that was accepted by the state controller, your residents would get a check for the amount by which your taxes, in theory, went up as long as you were within the cap, so that as long as you were within the cap, so that effectively you had a tax freeze. You know, we might have raised your taxes by a point, a percentage and a half, uh, but you got that back from the state in the form of a rebate. That's the theory. So we have been compliant with all that, we've been compliant and under the tax cap all these years. We, we developed an efficiency plan with our, with our local, uh, local villages and, uh, it was accepted and we continue to be under the cap, so all of the residents should be receiving a rebate for the amount by which their tax bill went up, specifically for village taxes. We're not responsible for any other levels of government, and so I don't know what that status is. I think everyone else complied as well, but I, I don't know.
How would they calculate that going forward this year when everybody's?
It's, it's, it's gonna be based upon the percentage that the levy changes, that's all they can control. They don't, they don't care what's happening to the assessments underlying the, the levy, but they're looking at the levy. So they'll look at it, they'll allocate a portion of the levy to you, and you'll get a rebate based on, on a formula, so it's not, look.
We actually send them a file.
Yeah, then they extract the information they need, so, um, so it's not impacted by the assessments, that's the bottom line. Um, and I think this is probably, this budget here is probably the last year of the tax freeze, um, so.
Doesn't mean the cap will go away with the freeze.
No, no, the cap's still in effect, that's not, and.
That's tied in with.
Probably just, it was money back.
Right, that was, it was a three-year, it was a three-year plan, I think this.
It's political again.
Sorry, I see.
Well, yes, and just the, the piece that's still true is that, um, our board has the power to not stay under the tax cap by however we decide, I think it has to be like a four.
It's a super majority, but for us, that's sixty percent, so we just need three of a second.
Right, um, as opposed to the school district that has to have a, a vote or it's much more complicated. So, we always have done it, but we never had to do it if we decided we didn't want to do it. And it's what we have anyway, so that's kind of the background to, right, sets the stage for what we do with this, if I like to remind myself, right.
And Brenda, I know you went through an exercise with us at the very start of this.
We can do that.
Let's go through an update.
Yep, let's just send a page to the cap, to the tax cap worksheet.
So this is the, the third page in?
Send the page and the next one. Okay, so what is the show, is those are the calculation, and on the far right, those numbers illustrate how much of the impact was to the levy. So it starts off with the prior year fiscal, the last year's levy at thirteen million six seventy-four. Then they give you a base growth factor, so if your assessments have grown, the building in, has grown in your, you know, government, in your village, it can also, they'll increase, and that number comes from Albany, from the state controllers office, we know control.
I'm not really sure I was getting.
Well, no, we, we have nothing to do with the calculation. The theory, the theory is, the theory is if, if you had a community that had, hypothetically, let's say you had five hundred new homes built last year, well, you shouldn't need to stay within the two percent tax cap, you should be given an, an additional bump to allow for the additional expenditures that are gonna come with those new residents that you have. So, um, they have this thing called the tax, uh, tax base growth factor. And I can't explain why that tax base growth factor is one percent here, but it is. It, I'm sure it has to do with expansions of homes, uh, you know, some of the remodeling, not remodeling, but some of the additions that have been done, improvements that have been done to homes, I guess, but again.
It comes, it comes out from Albany, I don't know.
It comes from Albany, so, and it's based upon the.
Two years ago last year that it was really high, it was like four percent.
There's a three.
Uh, yeah, I don't think it's been that high, but it was like there was a high three.
We've been lucky, prior year we were lucky, last year we were lucky again.
So the bottom line is we, we're getting the ability to levy an additional hundred and forty-three thousand just based on that growth factor.
Right, brings us to the thirteen eight eighteen, right?
Right, yeah.
Just that total, right. Um, pilots is, those are payments in lieu of taxes, we have one pilot, so that's a negotiated, um, fee they pay, is sixteen thousand, that's a given.
You skipped our levy growth factor as well.
Uh, no, we haven't gotten there yet, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's two pilots.
Oh, so that was a.
Well, we had to.
Forget about, how about we do this, let's forget about the fact that there's a pilot in this equation, because the pilot, it's a, it's.
It comes out and puts in.
It's added first and then subtracted.
Wonderful one.
It's intended to reflect the, the changes that may happen in, in your pilots. In this village, there are no significant pilots, sixteen thousand dollars is not much.
Is that fee repeated?
No, this, this is Columbia.
That's Columbia.
Ten thousand was the fee, but that's gone, so.
The fee's fee.
Right.
No more fee.
So if you have lots of changes in your pilots, that, that changes this formula, that doesn't really apply to this village, so forget about that one. Now it's at the allowable levy growth factor, that's the.
This is the important one, this is the allowable growth, um, so.
It's the cap.
It's, that's, that's, right, I was gonna.
It's the two percent tax cap.
Equals cap.
It's one point one, point point oh one.
And that's because inflation is less.
Less.
Right, it's one point, one point one five percent.
I think we had just about the lowest one last year, this is, I mean, this is an improvement over the last years. So that's adding another hundred and fifty-nine thousand of potential levy. Then we have a carry forward of seventy-nine thousand. So if you add those three numbers together, that's where we come up with, um, the three hundred and eighty-two thousand one eighty-eight. So that's the target at which we would be at the tax cap and using up, using all of our rollover.
So that raises. Just, just hang on, the rollover you call the prior year carry forward?
Right, so what happened is in prior years, we were under the allowable growth factor, we were under the cap, and what you're able to do is accumulate it and carry it forward, so.
Is that number different than the original number of eighty-seven to eighty-five, just because things changed over?
Uh, because it changed a little bit.
Six weeks or whatever?
No, what happened was I double-checked, and what they do is the, the state does, uh, check on us. We did, originally the levy was the thirteen, um, six seventy-four, but by the time we, between the time of adoption, when we adopted the rate per thousand, and by the time I got the final roll from Greenberg, and we encouraged him to give us the most current roll, it had changed. And there was an extra seven thousand dollars levied, which came to the village, so it was levied and went into revenues. But I had to reflect that, and it came off the cap, and when I have to file each year with the state, if you're audited, and you have to keep, you know, you have to reflect the actual amount, so that was an adjustment. And that's the difference between the original number that you were given and the seventy-nine thousand.
So the forty-one is what we're over the cap, that's, that's the bottom line. Now, the three, the three numbers on the, on the far right, they add up to three eighty-two.
Yeah.
But why are we adding them together? That's the tax base growth factor plus the allowable, plus the allowable levy. Aren't those comparable figures, why are we adding them?
No, they're, those are cumulative figures, so you're, we're allowed to, we're allowed to raise an hundred and fifty-nine thousand just based upon the raw cap number, the one point one five percent, and then we're allowed to raise an additional hundred and forty-three thousand based upon that growth, tax base growth factor that is, is unexplained. And then the carry forward, you can add it, so if you add all three together, your total amount that your budget could go up, your total amount that your levy could go up is three hundred and eighty-two thousand.
To be compliant.
Now, one, one thing that I think is helpful, um, when, I know there's a lot of numbers swirling and, and not all of you have been through the budget process, the, to understand what three hundred and eighty-two thousand means, start looking at the second page of this packet and you'll see that just the impact of increases in salaries and benefits is four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That's before you do anything, you know, that's dealing with your union raises and your.
Keeping your budget satisfied.
Right, if your workers comp, if you have an increase there, retirement system, medical.
Right.
And that's including the difference in the salaries in the police department of replacing some of the retirees with less paid.
Right, so it's, it reflects, this reflects all of it.
The way paying those retirees health insurance on top of the new people's.
And pensions.
Well, pensions we don't pay, once they retire, we're done paying on that. So, but it doesn't, but this number, the four seventy-one, does include the, uh, the change in pension cost, which I believe, actually, was, was it down this year?
Um, it was for the, uh, ERS, for the regular employees, police was not that significant. And it's still up there at twenty percent of all of these salaries, so every dollar you pay in a police salary is at a twenty percent.
Compared this to the.
Retirement cost, I can give you the exact rate.
Okay, so what's the game plan we're trying to figure out?
Is that specifically for the police or only?
Uh, there is a different rate for non-uniform, I can email.
So I think the game plan, um, is kind of, well, A, I assume that we all wanna try to stay under the cap. Uh, I know I, personally, I, I would like to try to make a run at staying under the cap.
I think we have to.
Um, and then how do we get there? Um, you know, I think, you know, before the meeting, Larry, uh, Tommy and Brett and I, uh, you know, were kind of throwing some, some ideas out there. Uh, you know, I think that this sheet was probably enough with the four seventy-one, eight seventy at the top, was kind of enough for me to at least start the conversations about different things, with probably the exception of, you know, what revenue areas could we possibly look at? Um, and I think Brendan and Larry are gonna go back, I think the only one we kind of took off the table was the, the aforementioned, um, building department, because I think we've kind of maximized that one, but some, for some small gains, uh, you know, could you look at mortgage tax, could you look at sales tax, could you look at, you know, those types of things?
Could you squeeze out another, say, twenty thousand?
Yes, so, you know, I, the way, the way I looked, uh, Mark, was if we're forty, call it forty-two thousand over the cap, with using all of the rollover, I'd like to cut more than this forty-two, you know, probably sixty to eighty, if that's possible. Um, you know, so what can we look at? We could look at some additional revenues, maybe twenty thousand there. We could look at the, the thing, and, and I know I'm jumping ahead because, um, because the, our pack and Joe are coming shortly, but one of the, one of the biggest increases this year was the fireworks coming back into the budget.
Definitely get it.
And we'll have, and, and we'll definitely need to have substantive discussions.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, but that was one that, you know, since oh nine, you know, it kind of said, it's definitely the, the, the personal list is nice to have, so I mean, I love the fireworks, I think it's a wonderful day down in the park, but it's extremely expensive, um, and, you know, that, that's half of the amount over the cap is significant.
Also a question about the fireworks, does this amount, twenty-four five, is that for the fireworks only, does that include all of the overtime, extra staffing?
There's, there's another forty-five hundred dollars that we took back into the village budget, I don't know, last year.
Store there.
Year, year.
Maybe two years ago, yeah.
Last, last, is that, that overtime, for overtime?
The village pays the overtime.
In all, the fireworks are about twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, yeah, that's the all-in number.
So, right, so the amount on here just reflects the increase from where we are right now.
Correct, yeah.
But that would be, that fireworks cost is like half overtime.
Exactly.
And that only got added in for the first time last year, because before that it was, and that was being fundraised.
Well, before that, it was in the budget.
It had been in the budget since, until two thousand nine.
Yes, but we came on, when Brian and I came on, was the year that it, you know, that was the meltdown of the economy, and we said, we can't do this. And then after that, after two years?
For almost all the years after that.
Yeah.
There was nothing in the village budget fireworks, that, that means overtime, cost of the work fireworks themselves and any other employees. It was only within the last year or two, I think, maybe, that the request was made by FACE that.
At least two years.
It's, yeah, I was gonna say two. That, uh, the village board at least funded the cost of the police overtime because they felt that it was, uh, it was difficult for motivational purposes for people to be working as hard as they do to raise money to pay for police overtime. It's a, it's a fact that it's, it's a fact that it's an overhead and it has to be covered by somebody, it's just, uh, they made an appeal based upon the psychology of the whole thing, and that's fine, and you, and the board heard them and put in, a couple of years ago, forty-five hundred dollars to cover the overtime, which by the way, is, uh, would turn into, uh, double that if it rains because of the provisions in the union contract. And so if it's, if it's, if it rains and it's, it's rescheduled, um, they're, they're paid for that time.
But if it's just last year, that face said it would no longer raise.
Last year, it's two years.
I think it's two years.
I think it's two years, and not just last year.
No, no, say, say again.
No, I think.
No, no, I just had a different question.
Different question, oh, my recollection was that last year we were all kind of caught a little short that they.
We don't think a lot of bigger fireworks.
Right.
So last year was the first year that FACE didn't pay for the fireworks itself?
No, they, no, they, we still.
It's unfunded right now.
Yeah, they, they paid for it last year.
They did?
Nope.
Well, no, let's, let's, let's specify our years here. The current fiscal year that we're in, which includes July fourth sixteen, has not been paid for, and the reason it wasn't paid for is because it was primarily FACE didn't run a fundraising event that raised enough money to cover it. They didn't run the Penguin Plunge in sixteen.
Okay.
Right?
Correct.
Can you remember?
We're just not back in plump sixteen.
Right, and there was a Spring Fest, but didn't raise money, or enough money, um, and there was Rocktoberfest, which, which didn't raise enough money, so, um, so you still have a deficit there that's gotta be covered, you'll deal, we're not gonna deal with that tonight, I mean.
So, but just.
We did have budget for it last year.
We did have budget for last year, there's still a deficit from last year's fireworks, and now this year's fireworks is another twenty-four thousand dollars, plus.
Last year's, last year's deficit like seventeen, just the actual fireworks, I think we absorbed the overtime and we paid, well, but
the cost of that.
There was no commitment by anyone.
Okay, so we're looking at seventeen still from last year plus an additional proposed twenty-five for this year. That's a lot of money.
So, so, why don't we have this conversation, because the second, the second, I mean, just about a couple of other little kiddies of money, just to see. Are there still twenty thousand dollars in the budget for sustainability coordinator or sustainability projects?
Still a budget.
I don't think it was twenty, it was eighteen, yeah.
Okay, because my suggestion is that, that that get removed and just used from a general fund if there is a specific project that needs a.
Almost like a contingency, if you say we have, we found a great project, that's twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that gets.
That's a good.
And along the lines, I mean, I hate to say it, but it's, you know, it's not, unless we have a specific, uh, project in mind, it's kind of just sitting there being a tax burden. The other thing is, that I was thinking about is, there used to be a two thousand dollar line item, I think, or something, or for both the GPTF and for the ECB that I think carried yearly, uh, Brenda would not say. And if that's the case, that's another four thousand, because GPTF isn't functioning and they haven't really made use of the money, and ECB never makes use of the money.
Okay, um, what we had in environmental control was eighteen-five for the coordinator, and that two hundred and fifty dollars was just for supplies. So the coordinator itself was eighteen-five.
They don't get supplies.
We paid a little bit out for something on the, um, coordinator line. Was it perpetra, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we paid for, paid for the.
Working on the microgrid.
The microgrid, yeah.
So then.
But the eighteen-five is still in there for next year.
So the two other ones was, GPTF had a, used to have a working budget of around two, two grand a year, I think.
Money left, well, more way back from the first day forty, that actually made money because of the green fair that we had, and they paid fees to come.
But it continues to now, so there won't be a budget out of it.
Well, it would, yeah, it wouldn't be a budget out of it.
If they needed the money, want money for something, there was money there, yeah.
I think.
There's a, there's a, uh, environmental conservation board, forty, thirty. Is that still two grand?
Four ten, I'm just looking right now, um, fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was in, um.
And then there's, I, I thought there was still a GPTF.
Yeah, I don't, I think we took that out. I believe that was taken out. I don't think talking about.
It's twenty-two fifty.
Well, because a couple of years ago, we bought some signs for.
Eighty, ninety?
Eighty, ninety, so it was an answer.
It looks like, it looks like it's zero.
Okay, it's been zero? Yes.
Excellent.
Eighty, ninety, four forty-eight, it's zero.
Zero.
And then.
That was the line, it was all in the same budget, but there was nothing in that line.
So the other thing was, the other one that I wanna talk about is the traffic committee had a budget this year of seven grand, and I'm not sure that it needs to be a top level.
Maybe signs or maybe costs.
Well, you know, actually, a lot of the, a lot of the costs were printing for hand carts that were used by the police, so where the committee was absorbing the cost of what really what was, you know, I mean, probably three thousand dollars was police printing. what was, you know, I mean, probably $3,000 was police printing.
But we also said that we were going to move ahead with repainting the lines and...
But this is just for, this is just...
Committee itself.
No, I know, committee budget, but my question was, but is that, that, this is slightly different, but I'm doing the same line. We agreed to do certain projects that everybody's been demanding for quite some time now. Is that in this budget?
No, we don't have the cost for those yet.
And because we agreed with a liking and we agreed on some stamp cost as well.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Because we committed to that.
Yes. So, what I'm saying is that we...
Wait, wait, on the meeting, I'm getting that, basically.
If, if I meant correctly, we had a $7,000 line this time, I think that, that going forward, depending what we want to do, and depending how the cost is allocated, I mean, that's really kind of a high number for what the committee needs to do.
So another couple thousand, you take, I think it's a couple of lines.
Yes, I do, on page 30, okay, 30 through 10.
Okay. All right, so you have $7,000 yourself?
It's on two lines, we have it in supplies for 5,000 and education for two. We made a little comment, 30 through 10 to...
Yeah, the education has to be used, so...
And what happened though, though, things were charged to equipment, so basically the budget was used up, but it doesn't, went to the 200 line, I'll probably move them down.
I don't see anything up here, not for this year. There's nothing on equipment this year.
You mean for 16?
30 through 10, 200.
Because I have, I do have the cost of what we spent for the 16 budget. It's on the order of...
I'm sorry, you're right, I'm looking at the current budget.
It's on the order of probably $5,600 at this point.
Yeah, so supplies we spent, but not, not equipment. There was, there was a zero.
I think it was equipment we did buy last year, we bought the signs and speed things.
Oh, that was a part of there.
No, yeah.
Yeah, so basically that much, that $7,000 budget, 5,000 is for supplies and 2,000 is for education. And this year so far, they've used zero for education and about 2,000 per supplies, which will probably go up because we're going to be doing those cards for the walk safe, the stop looking way whatever it's called.
I honestly, looking at what I have, we've spent about $5,000 starting back last year's balance.
Yeah, that may be.
I can show you the numbers off the shelf, but the point is, I think that, you know, there's two aspects of what we're going for. The one thing that I'd like to have money in, it's in the education line, I'd like to keep money in to be able to have the video festival again and that was about, let's say, including prize money, let's say 750 bucks. So if we could get like a thousand dollars for education, then we could run that program.
That makes sense.
And as far as the other stuff goes, it's, you know, Larry, that's, it feels a little weird that, I mean, I know it's Peter and Paul, so I don't know. It feels weird that we're paying for cards and stuff for the police. I mean, I understand the art signs and stuff, but...
But, yeah, I know, exactly. It's one line on the other.
It could be here or there.
Yeah, but we think we can eliminate $2,000 off the overall budget.
I think we should, we have to, we have to, you know, we have to pull back and...
So 10 off of supplies, 10 off of education.
Okay.
Mean 10 off supplies, the whole budget's 7,000.
No, supplies is seven, so I'll go six.
Supplies are five, I was on four.
A thousand off of each.
A thousand, oh, I got it, I'm sorry.
More than reasonable for now. I hope that Walter won't get himself a drink, but I think that that's more than reasonable.
I think Walter, you're prudent.
So it comes down by 5,000.
Down by 2,000.
A thousand off of each, okay.
And I think the other thing we'll talk about when Larry...
So take off two bills.
When Joe gets here is the nature center, particularly the landscaper piece, you know, I think...
Well, you know what the argument is there, right? Because they put in, they put all the money into the landscaping and they didn't have proper maintenance of it and it got, it had a lot of problems and so now...
They want to bring it back.
They want to bring it back and keep it maintained.
I mean, we'll talk about what to get here, but I mean, my initial take is, yeah, we spent 30, 35,000 to build seven gardens, we're going to spend the 25 and bring them back, but if we can't maintain them, we're not, it's like a...
I find this number is high, this is a commercial landscaper, but I don't know, for instance, if you were to go and ask someone like Ann Adresson if she wanted to do fine garden maintenance, not mowing, but just maintain the gardens, and she was to come in every other week for like eight hours, I can't see that number going to 25,000. This happens if you are trying to wrap an entire, I don't know who you're getting that number from, and it sounds like it's, there's a bunch of...
You can't really make a judgment until you see the RFP itself, you know what I mean? Like you don't know what the scope was a day after.
That's right, that's right. I'm sorry, I think you can have that conversation.
Yeah, we will, you know, we have to reduce the scope. Well, we can say that, but that's another, that's another line item that I want to talk, obviously talk about, because that's, you know, 33,500.
I don't want to cite Janice's point about, but I guess it would be DPW that would need to have the line painted, I think.
I do think that some of that could come out of contingency because it's kind of one time.
But also there's...
We, I mean, we're going through it every year, I guess we're going to do it every year.
I mean, so there's a materials cost for the paint and then there's a cost for, and we talked about some things we might need to have a couple of part-time, you know, like job-based hourly person doing some work, but...
I think it's got to be outsourced, I really do. I don't think you can, you can't, you can't paint lines on the road with...
High school kids?
With unskilled part-timers, you have to do it...
By outsourced, you mean you have to have a company do it?
Yeah, I think so. I think your best bet is to, is to put an inventory together of the exact painting that needs to be done, that's above and beyond what our normal painting is, and then get prices and see where it is. You know, I just...
It's going to be tough to have that by Monday.
No, you're not going to have that on Monday necessarily, so, I mean, it may be end up, it may end up being contingency.
You can add it for next year's budget.
But, but it's going to be recurring.
We definitely have a more cycle, but that's for sure.
So, what is our take about the fireworks on this? I mean, there's another, I mean, to me, you're looking at the landscaper fee and the fireworks are the big, are the big items, that same...
I mean, again, as much as I love the fireworks and I love that day down in Madison Park, I, I don't have any, I will lose a minute of sleep saying I'm cutting the fireworks.
You might lose your job.
I might lose my job, I wish I could get more sleep.
What about, do neighboring villages have them every year as well? Because what about some, what about some kind of shared, you know, sequencing so that we open Madison Park to jobs, I'm making up sort of relative sizes, but, you know, part year, so we have it every other year, but we can go to the other village on the off years and they're welcome here on our year.
It's a good idea, we, I think we've talked about that a couple of times over the years and I'm not sure if you had input and...
You'll take fireworks over my dead body.
It was various response.
Put it back on, if people want it that bad, come up with a funding.
Well, you know, other villages, that's what they do, I know, it's not part of their school budget, it's not part of their village budget, it's raised by a... Yeah, I think, I mean, we'd be happy to help people raise money, you know, if we want help with the mailing or, you know, help people, you know, go to a fundraiser or whatever, but, you know, I think that it's, I just, I can't justify spending village money on it. If we were under by 200,000, I still might have an issue with it, but maybe I would fund half, but, you know, the fact that we're three whole, yeah, I just, I can't, I can't justify it.
I completely agree, that was the first thing that leaked out to me, is what? So...
And I can't believe we need phones in the village, village-wide phones is...
I know, what happened to...
Give everyone a $3 credit for their cellphone.
Spring and tin cans.
Can't people shout to each other anymore? No one talks to each other in the face?
What is this thing, this phone? What is this new fangled phone?
It's not, it's really...
It's the connectivity.
It's, yeah, it's all the data, it's all the phone system, but phone system itself was fine, what's actually costing us a lot of money are some of the legacy standard phone lines that we have, and I don't just mean fax lines, we do have a few of those.
You mean the pots lines?
Yeah, no, but it's, it's not, it's the, it's the point-to-point data lines that we have.
What, T1s, I guess?
They're not T1s, they're, I forgot, they're dedicated circuits basically, so we have the radio transmission, we have links from town hall up to mountain road where the radio antennas are, where the fire antennas are, we have the link from here, DPW up to here where the DPW radio is. So there's, there's those dedicated circuits which are very expensive and not, they're not discounted by the carrier that we have, so it's, they're just not competitive anymore.
They're copper.
Yeah, I assume so, so...
So I'm looking at the library line, which they have requests for electronic devices and books, is what, was in a way similar to, to the fireworks line where it's something that had been in the budget, had been taken out of the budget and they're requesting it to be packed in the budget now.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, you know, I don't know, maybe percentage, I don't know what the library budget is compared, but it can be a percentage decrease there.
Yeah, because I mean, overall, I mean, I think the line above the fireworks line is, is great, it's, the Parson Rec is actually under by $18,000 if you, you know, net of their revenue, which is phenomenal, you know, that's a huge help.
That's if you take fireworks and the nature center issues.
Exactly, you're right, so kind of their year-over-year budget is actually $18,000 cheaper to fund for the village, you know, so I think that that's a big help. You know, the DPW is down again, even if it's only 3,000, in fact, they've saved us hundreds of thousands over the last several years, it's amazing.
Actually, I'll add that it's a little bit, it's more, if you look at contingency, we've taken a reduction in there reflecting some potential retirements or if they haven't been announced yet, a replacement of lower local...
The DPW's in higher.
So it's a 54,000 projected savings.
And my other question was why is police overtime going up when we hired a officer?
54,000 is the delta between the people retiring and...
As of when?
I think I'm jumping the gun, personnel, I don't know, yeah.
Well, but there's health insurance to offset it, so there's no savings.
There's a wash there.
Okay.
But the, the police overtime is another question I had, why is that going up now that we're fully staffed? And the answer is, it's just we've been over every year, so we're taking a percentage of that to make it, you know, line up. We've been under budgeting the police overtime line.
Where is that, I'm sorry?
It's under, same contingency line, the DPW and police overtime, there's a 25,000 increase in police overtime, which I thought was counterintuitive, I thought that should be a savings this year.
Yeah.
Since we were having a, but I think if we've been over, I'd say 50,000, we're going to put 25 back in.
It's to reflect the actual performance.
So that was, I was like, oh, we found that, we're going to go ahead and ask for overtime, or what is that for?
Yeah, no, it's not for...
The mayoral detail could be cut.
It's just an overburden. Secret Service.
My driver, we weren't a driver this year.
I want Secret Service.
So...
I just, I wanted to put in a little plug for the library in that, you know, I, if they, if they say, you know, okay, fine, you know, we're really, but I guess I wouldn't be quite, you know, books and education and that kind of thing with the fireworks as, you know, a more necessary public expense, that's my personal feel about that, I'd rather not.
To me, the electronic device thing is, you know, you make it go to nine and even do you take, you know, do you make the fire departments only get four hours a week extra or something like that, I mean, we're really...
Where are you now?
You know, to me, you just kind of say, everybody's got to give back a little bit of something, like the fire department, this is the first time I think we've had an increase since I've been here in '09, but you say, you know, instead of getting 5,000 for extra five hours a week from the part-time guy, do you make it, you only spent $4,000, are we going to get to that point where you come to...
See, that raises a ton, hiring somebody for an hour day or whatever, you should hire them at one person and then can you say you're only, you're only paying you can afford a person's, you know, that can get awkward.
Right, it's the same person.
Exactly.
It's an extra five hours.
Totally. An extra one hour per day.
There you go.
One hour a day.
Five hours for six.
All right, so you do discussions with just that.
I mean, the library, I agree, I just tried to give it...
Yeah.
That is quite a description, I think 18.5 was saving, I think we can save.
This was, this was, you know, one of your questions.
Yeah, maybe take a thousand, another $15, all right, just to spread the influence.
I'm also just trying to think about the percentage, you know, what seems like a bigger number for a bigger department, you know, is a bigger, the dollar amount is the same percentage wise, it's like...
There you go. We've, we've got to go over here. Which in a nutshell is we're around $42,000 over the tax cap right now, and that includes taking the entire carryover that we have previous years of being under the tax cap. So we'd like not to take all $80,000 on the carryover if we can, because that means you want to cut between, say, increasing revenue and decreasing costs, about $80,000 or so. I mean, I'll go get the chief if you need him. He'd be sent to home to save money. But we, you know, so we're, we're kind of looking at the fringes of things now, you know, Larry and Brett, they're going to see if any revenue items like mortgage tax, they can say, another $5,000, so we're not talking big, big numbers here, we're not slashing things, but we're looking at things that are kind of nice to have, things that we can be a little less conservative on the revenue side, to kind of frame it for you guys. And two of the items, two of the bigger, new ticket items were from the rec. I guess one is new again, which is the fireworks, which was, you know, eliminated back in, I think, '09, I think, from the village budget, added back in by Harper Riley at Donald for a couple of years, and then, you know, obviously FACE took it over. Last year FACE said they didn't want to pay for it anymore.
Is that the good one?
They did pay for it, unfortunately, so, which we have to figure out how we're paying for last year's now, probably come out of contingency, but, so now we have this year's fireworks.
Last year's meeting?
2016, they already blew up in the eyes, they blew up in the sky already.
You already...
Yes, we already paid for it, we just got to figure out where we're allocating it. But, you know, I think, so that was like the first thing I think that, you know, we looked at and said we probably want to eliminate was the funding for the fireworks. My guess was to keep in the $4,500 that we put back into budget for special events generically, which is police overtime, that FACE, you know, didn't want to fundraise to pay for the police overtime for events. I think that's probably something I would say we should keep in because we do have other events, we have the Spring Fest, we have Rocktoberfest, that can offset that and help fundraise.
And 4,500 of the 24.5 you'll be taking out was also for police overtime.
Okay.
Just so you know.
And that was for the...
That's for, that's because their contract says if you cancel Saturday, no matter when, you're obligated to pay them both Saturday and Sunday. So the 24.5 with the 45 was the fireworks plus two paydays for police.
Right.
So if you only ran one, it would actually become 24.5.
Right, right, I understand.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that you'd leave the 4,500 in the 7550 line because I think it gives us some options with some of the other things we have, and one of the things we haven't talked about, other than I think Larry and I, is that, you know, we likely want to do something to celebrate the 20 years of scenic Hudson Park, and that might be something that can be used to plan an event because I would think we want to do something to let the community know that those 20 years have passed and I know you guys agreed to extend the paperwork due on that until June, but I, I think it would definitely warrant some type of celebration.
Absolutely, and, you know, I think to a person on the board just these, we all like fireworks, we think that it's a wonderful day in Madison Park, it's just, it's probably the hardest thing to defend in our, in the budget, so, you know, I think that that's why it was originally eliminated and that's why I think we, you know, are in pretty good agreement to keep it out. It's not to say that we wouldn't be willing to help a group, you know, not FACE group, FACE group, whoever it is, that wants to step up and try to raise money, so if anyone's the Face group, whoever it is, that wants to step up and try to raise money, so if anyone's out there saying, oh my God, they're cutting the fireworks, happy to work with whoever we can to, uh, to, to try to fundraise for it, but I still think that, uh, tax money should be used for the actual fire, for the fireworks.
So, while on that, since the decision is that's coming out, I do think, since you've indicated that you'd hoped there'd be a way that could happen, is a discussion does need to be held with the chief, because that's a major planning thing, as far as his manpower for that entire week goes, um, his men have restrictions of what they can and can't do, and there's, I think, there's, it becomes a date where he's gonna say, I can't do it. So, I think that's a conversation that needs to be had, and then I'll have to find out from the fireworks company, what's the absolute drop dead date, if we have to, um, you know, if we have to not have a contract.
And when we get to the page, it's like, I'll communicate and, you know, we can have blast, social media, that kind of thing, so if someone does wanna step up, you can get going, because, you know, Rousey Bond eight ball already, so.
Well, okay, so, I, do you wanna, you wanna just open up, or do you want us, how would you like to proceed?
I had just given a, a little background about how, uh, X, the fireworks, the nature center, you guys actually came in net down about eighteen thousand, a little more than eighteen thousand dollars this year, which we all thank you for, uh, we appreciate that. Um, I know you take your budgets very seriously, the revenue lines, you think about not only the village, but the, the users and, and the families that are gonna be, you know, having to pay that, um, you know, and, as well as, you know, your staff, and, you know, uh, we've talked many times about how understaffed you really are at the Parks Department, um, but we're, we're lucky to have, you know, kind of two guys who are so dedicated that we're able to maintain it with summer help and part-time help, um, that, you know, all, all, all the positive things, um, that we're still maintaining, uh, I haven't heard from you yet, but I'm assuming we're gonna have a similar level of service for eighteen thousand dollars less, if you add in revenues and, and cost savings, so.
Well, the, the key will be what we end up doing up at the nature center, um, in order for the plan that we've implemented, um, to work at its best, is that I have to know there are things I do not have to send up to the nature center, as far as manpower goes. If we drop, if you don't seem to allow us to go forward with that, and I have to use some earmark, summer help, or crisp, or ska, to pick up for what we may not get out of the landscaper, or out of the laborer, then the other things in the parks that we were expecting to maintain, you know, everything changes. Just from my perspective, if I have to use more summer help for my guys, it means I'm up there more too, whereas if I am able to go forward and we hire these professionals, um, which is what the Woods Committee and RPAC both feels the right step, then we, uh, we can do the rest of what we're trying to do. We've got some exciting new directions that we're looking at, and, you know, I, I joked with you before, and I've joked with Larry many times about this, is that, you know, my, my first job in life was, um, at the Don Bosco Community Center in Porchester, and it was a United Way agency, and as getting funding from the United Way, you agree to go and talk about what they do all over the place to hope to get more money, and I almost feel that half my job is trying to raise money these days, but, uh, I'm also proud of the fact that if we meet our target, we'll bring in just less than seven hundred thousand dollars next year, and without a pool, you won't find a rec department in the county that will even come close to that type of return. So, that's good stuff, you know, and I think we can do it, and I think some of the new directions, I'd like to share a couple of those, just to give you an idea of what we're doing. Um, we're, we're working with the school district on what would be called, um, what, what we're referring to as a field marshal program, uh, where, because we basically have someone on duty three hundred and sixty-five days a year, is on data, we don't have at least somebody working, we are working with them to provide some coverage, to check their facilities for them, specifically the Mizaros Field and the fields at Dow's Lane, with someone who's on duty for us, and they would pay us for that time. So, for example, if I've got, uh, let's use someone we can refer to, if Ronnie Hardware is working scenic Hudson Park for five hours on, let's say, a Saturday night, and he was, he doesn't make this much, so I hope he's not listening, and let's assume he made twenty dollars an hour, and, uh, that meant we paid him a hundred dollars for the night, but during that time, he made two site visits to the school district. Every site visit, um, would be a twenty-five dollar payment from the school district back to us. So, we...
We can make a little more, make a profit, right?
Well, I...
It goes once an hour, and so...
If, 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 for example, you know, if we, if we have some, we have as many as three or four different people that could work on a Saturday or Sunday, they don't have anyone to watch their fields, and they're already having difficulty with non-approved groups going to Mizaros. Now, part of the agreement that we gave to them is, they have to develop a criteria that we then would have to approve, because our worker has to know what steps to take, because their steps at scenic Hudson would be different than they would be at the Mizaros Field. Their steps, if there's a problem at scenic Hudson, is they try to reach Mayor Chris DiPaoli, or then it goes to the police department. If they go to Mizaros and there's an organized game going on, and the people won't leave, well, we're working on whether the first call is to Gary Knowles, or to the police department, or, we have to work all of that stuff, but, but, we've got people on duty anyway, and it's a way to get some of that payback. So, if over the course of the summer, there's two hundred visits, two hundred times twenty-five is a little bit, nice piece of change for money we would've been spending anyway. And the school district, after we had had discussions with them on this years ago, actually came to us this time and asked us to come in, I put a proposal together, I gave it to them last week, and they are very excited about it. So, that's just, you know, one of, one of the ideas.
It's good shared service.
What, right, great shared service, and, you know, we benefit if their fields stay good.
Absolutely.
And we get all those payments.
I'll ultimately...
That's right, absolutely. And, and it also goes along the line, which I've always told you, is that what, what we do have here, that most communities don't have, is an amazing working relationship with the staffs in the school district and the village, not just with our department, and it goes across a lot of different lines. The fact that both of us were able to sit down and work this out as quickly as we did, I know Chris still has to sell it to his board, but I think there's been a lot of positive feeling on everyone's part that this can happen, so, yes, we have to, we have to find some new and innovative, innovative ways to do things. At your request, what RPAC did, um, in the past year was, you know, they looked long and hard at our rental policy, and although we never got to the point where we, we're allowing renters to bring in alcohol, we have loosened a lot of the other restrictions. Instead of now being locked into either an afternoon party or a night party, if you're the first one there, you can pick the hours you want, you'll pay accordingly, but, you know, we've given people more leeway. Um, we've not just said no, now, we've not just only made it Saturdays and Sundays, if it works out and somebody wanted a Friday or a different night, we're being more flexible with that, we're reaching out to more people for the nature center. So, both the, the rental lines are up in our revenue side, because we're anticipating that that will also continue, so, you know, again, those are, those are the types of things that, you know, we're, we're looking to do, um, just one other page, you know, and again, as far as the nature center goes, just to, to, to show you why we think it's so important that we're able to maintain that property, you know, we've been slow to the finish line with what we're doing at the nature center, but we are gaining ground. Right now, there's, uh, we have music with Mark, you all know who Mark Jacoby is, he's been working for us for over thirty years, he's got, his classes right now are actually full, uh, this session, we have adult yoga being given by Miss Cynthia, we're working with a gentleman who is fondly known as the God of Insects, Lawrence Forcell is setting up a series of programs about bugs for children up at the nature center in the spring. The Girl Scouts use the building on a regular basis, the Boy Scouts also use it, the Irvington Gardening Club has meetings and programs up there, we've increased rentals up there, we've created new partnerships with groups as, such as Arch for Kids. Uh, Arch for Kids ran an architecture class, um, this year for us, and, uh, there's more things planned for the spring. Curious on Hudson, uh, does nature hikes up in the woods, and they've done different programs with us, uh, that started and will continue throughout the summer and the fall. We have a gentleman by the name of Eric Stone, uh, from a place called the Rewilding School, who's run for, uh, foraging classes up there, um, and now we're working with the Native Plant Center, trying to find partnerships with them. Uh, very soon I'll be meeting with the Jewish Community Center, because we're trying to find things they may wanna use the nature center and the trails for. So, we're reaching out, we're looking for partners, we want more people. The reaction we get from everyone when they come to the nature center is, wow, oh, yeah, how long has this been here? It's, it's, we used to call Halsey Pond Irvington's hidden secret, the nature centers are hidden secret. You know, when we talk to the, when we have the sustainability day for eighth graders up at the nature center, the very first thing I do every time is, how many of you have, are here for the first time? Hoping I'd only see a handful of hands, and usually about three-quarters of the kids put their hands up, they've never even been up there. And that leads to the next thing. One of the biggest goals is to try to get the school district to buy in, to become more partners, and find a way to use the nature center, whether that's maybe with a teacher writing an IED grant, because the biggest problem for getting Dow's Lane or the Main Street School, there's transportation, so we're hoping maybe we could find some teachers who would be willing to do something to get funded, so we can get more kids up there. If we could get the school to use the nature center, I think that would be a huge new step for us. So, you know, those are, there are some of the things we're trying to do up there, but...
Have you talked to Mercy at all?
We, we've had, we've had dialogue with Mercy several times over the years, and every time it was time for the deal to go through, it fell apart, so, and we've been more than happy to try again.
Sure, yeah, no, I just figured, you know, biology class or something would be an interesting place to be.
So, Joe, talk to the nature center increase.
Well, the nature center increase is twofold, number one, it's adding nine thousand dollars to, uh, a second labor line up there, this individual would work between sixteen to twenty hours a week, he would be someone who, you know, knew his stuff, where it's not just someone who would go out and work, they would need knowledge of plants, they would, they would need to know the types of things we have in the gardens up there, which are not easy to know, some of those gardens are extremely complicated, and, um, you know, that person would make, do, do the little things, make sure the gardens stayed in the shape that the main landscaper were to leave them in, and when there were projects, when there were individuals who wanted to go up there, when there were volunteers who would be willing to put work in, this laborer would help to coordinate them, and make sure, especially during the hottest period of the summer, everything's getting watered, and just basically take care of the ground for us, so. Now, now that all of the, uh, all of the critical gardens are fenced, um, uh, we think we can do a much better job of keeping the deer out of there, which would allow the gardens to look better longer. Uh, I don't know what, what, if any of you remember, but in early, longest of last year, the Woods Committee was never more excited, and could not wait to have a fundraiser, because we were convinced that people got to see how beautiful it looked up there, that we would find some new donors, some new people that would wanna get involved, uh, we then lost our summer help, we then lost, um, all of the other veg, all of the other edible things in the woods, and the deer found the gardens, and they destroyed them. So, we, we have to do a better job of protecting them. The problems with the gardens is they're very complicated, you know, originally, we had hoped, and we had asked that gardens be designed that would help educate people, and that residents could see what worked up at the nature center, and then duplicate it in their house, everything, that means everything from the rain garden, to the bog garden, to the edible garden, um, but most of the gardens are very complicated. If you really don't, I mean, you, you can stand there and look at two plants, and you won't be able to know, especially in its early growth, if it's a weed or if it's actually a plant, and how do you teach a summer person to do that? Right, and so you, you need, you need experts. Now, unfortunately, a lot of the people who have designed the gardens initially, um, either because they no longer live here, or they've moved away, or lack of interest, um, they're just not there, and we had hoped by now more volunteers would be involved up there.
So, Joe, let me just see if I can characterize this, the, the intent was to have demonstration gardens that people could replicate in their own, on their own...
That's definitely one of the, one of the criteria that was set up.
But that, in fact, has not happened, because they're too complicated, so...
And we don't have, we don't have people to care for the gardens. The only time the gardens looked good was last summer, when we actually did have someone working up there, almost on a daily basis, and it required an enormous amount of work, um, and it worked, it worked until August, so...
But it raises the question, if it's not fulfilling a purpose of being really usable by the community, it's like, oh, wow, I could, you know, I have a shady spot, I could replicate something like that in my yard.
You've got to simplify somehow.
Right, and, and here's the one thing I have to tell you, I'm not the guy to tell you how to simplify it, because, you know, I mean, I, I, I read the names of these plants, and I'm, you know, I don't know what you're telling me, and even people on the Woods Committee who are into this are having difficulty with it, so we're hoping with a professional landscaper that someone's gonna help us, and we can figure out, we may have to cut back some of the things in there, we may have to take out the things that are the most difficult. Um, weeding those gardens is a job in itself.
So, Joe, just, 'cause you know my background is...
Yep.
So, what do you mean by a professional landscaper? 'Cause that rings alarm bells in my head, only because what you're asking for is someone that actually has horticultural knowledge, which means basically almost no, none of the commercial landscapers.
Few.
You know, I could name you probably three names that could probably fulfill that role.
Well, all I can tell you is on that question, that Lucille Muns, our landscape architect, Nikki, members of the Woods Committee, members of the Native Plant Center, have all told us, they feel there are some landscapers out there capable of doing this work, so based on that, I have to trust that when this RFP comes back, we're gonna find someone in there that we feel has that ability. If we don't get someone, that when we all look at this, we don't think it's the right person, we're not going to hire them.
We need to also use their expertise to, to put into the RFP what it is, we think, you know, or the experts think, I just need to be done.
Yeah, it's just, you know, it's a common thing, it's a totally different set of expertise required, and that's why...
Absolutely.
I mean, if you want, I can give you names offline, but you probably already have.
Well, if, if, we're, I hope we do, because we've sent this out, and if you send it to us, either to me or to Karen, we'll compare it to the list we've maintained.
They may already be on this.
Right, and if they're, if they're not, we, we'll be sure to get it to them, because one of the things, in order to bid this time, you must attend the mandatory walkthrough. That was supposed to be today, obviously it did not happen.
Interesting to see who showed up today.
Well, well, the good news is, is we had at least a dozen, half a dozen people reach out to us to see when it's been rescheduled for, so that, that was a good sign, and it has been rescheduled for next Wednesday, the twenty-second, at ten AM, so we're hopeful...
I don't know if this amount of snow is gonna get you...
I know, I know.
Especially if it's getting above thirty-five.
Well, but this way, I'm sure it's gonna be better than today was.
That's true.
If it's not, we're really in trouble, so...
But the twenty-five thousand dollars is your best guess?
It's our, it's our best guess, that's correct. If, if, again, we bid this a few months ago, we only got two bids back, the range was way off the chart, and one of the things we realized is, we didn't make it clear enough how they should put their figures in. So, what we had Lucille Muns do this time is she came up with a different form, which was, was much clearer, and will be much easier for us to make sure that the bidder understood what we were looking for. Um, it could come in anywhere from, I would say, eighteen to twenty-five thousand, I have no idea, again, I have to trust the people that are the experts when it comes to this, uh, you know, if it's more than that, then we're back to the drawing board anyway, if you allow the money to stay in, and that is the number, and we feel the person is capable of doing the work, I'm telling you that I think it's extremely important that we allow this to happen. If this fails, even if we hire someone, then next year, we have to have a whole different conversation about where the, the future of the nature center is. 'Cause I can tell you right now, with the eight new members on the Woods Committee, which we're all very excited about, with the leadership of Nikki Connington, with the support of RPAC, that if we can't take a huge step in the next year, it's really gonna be time, and I, I let you guys know this last year, that I was worried about the nature center, so it, it, it'll be time next year to take a, a hard look if we can't make things get better up there.
So, Joe, was your thought process that this is, is a one-year deal?
At that amount, the answer is yes.
So, it's not a recurring...
Again, I, I, if, if, what we want to happen is, the landscapers take us to another level, the gardens are taken care of, we find people who take more of an interest in the garden, we find people who may be willing to learn and adopt gardens, so there might be seven different people who are assigned to gardens that would eventually take them over, the, where I think the amount, money has to stay in the budget, is that person who's up there a few days a week, especially in the spring, summer, and fall, to make sure the gardens are doing okay.
That's your labor.
That's the labor on it, correct.
I'm just trying to put together, I understand what you're saying, that this twenty-five thousand dollars would be one time to see if you can get it where you want it, but where we want it is simple... But where we want it is simpler than it is now.
Yeah, and I would hope that with the gardener or with the help of our, our landscape architect, we're going to look at each of them and see what's growing, what's working, what's easy enough and things that we're having difficulty with, we, we're just going to have to replace. It doesn't make sense to leave in what we don't understand.
We create a hard start.
Right. So basically this is, this is money to try to revamp it, simplify it, make it more usable.
You know, it's more just to maintain it. Cause we know, having looked at the, at the gardens last year, how magnificent they, they do command be. And they can't be, it's just that we have to protect them, you know, better than we did because, you know.
Well, I mean, it's a living thing. It's a living system, so the things have, gardens change year to year. So, you know, plants have to be maintained, they have to be divided, they have to be replaced from dead plants or plants that aren't working. So, you know, you need, that's where you need, you know, you need to have a certain level of expertise.
And that's where we see that individual, that laborer, that person, that once the gardens get to the point where this is what the edible garden is going to be, then that person is able to help us with it. And that doesn't mean we won't supplement that person with part-time help with senior interns and things like that. But it means that my main crew that have to maintain Memorial and Scenic and Mathis then aren't going to be pulled up there. That's another issue, and I've mentioned this in the past. You know, if I'm going to send a crew up to the nature center and it's a school day, it, it's not a five-minute ride and you come back, you know? It's not easy coming back and forth there.
Also, just so you know, in, in that RFP, we took out the, the, you know, menial work that, that like grass, that kind of stuff.
Where do?
Yeah, that's not in the, in the RFP, so because we know we can do it. It's really the more intricate stuff that, you know, actually tended to the gardens that we're mainly concerned with, that's what the RFP is.
Right. As Rick's saying, we, Chris can draw, we, we have some equipment in the nature center. Chris can send, you know, two summer helpers up there, they can cut the grounds and weed with what's on the outside, but they can't go in the garden because they'll, they'll destroy it a little bit.
Can I just, um, touch on the recurring nature of this expense? Because, um, I didn't get the impression in our discussions that, uh, I understand the RFP is for a one-year contract, you know, to do this for one year, but that, uh, in large part, you're going to need to do similar tasks next year and the year after that.
Unless we're able to get people to buy in to becoming part of, of taking care of the gardens. I can't tell you that I'm not going to be here next year and say, we need to bring a good landscaper in again. I'm telling you, that's not the plan. I'm telling you that we're hopeful that we can move away from that, but I can't get to that next level without some help at this initial stage right now.
I mean, personally, I, I think I've seen the labor coming. I mean, he warned us for at least three years, um, which is probably when it was completed. Um, so I think, I have no problem with the labor. I think that that makes sense. And I think that in order to maintain the other parks and, you know, get the hauls these once in a while and that kind of thing, you need that person. I think the landscaper, um, you know, I think, I think there was some confusion if it was recurring or not. I think that if, if it's, I think for budgetary purposes, maybe what we do is say, if we keep in 10,000 for recurring for next year, kind of hedging our best that maybe at least someone can come in and tweak things a little bit, but not the full 25. And then whatever the difference is this year, maybe as a contingency thinks it's one-year kind of, kind of payment or something, it's not. If you don't anticipate being 25 every year, I mean, it might even have to budget the whole thing.
Listen, again, I would love to come back here next year and say that, you know, we've got the friends at the nature center off the ground and there's a commitment for them to give $15,000 towards maintaining the gardens. That's where we're hoping to get. Um, it's, it's hard to get there right now because I don't have anything to sell anyone right now. If you go look at the garden, you're not going to want to buy it and you're not going to want to take care of it.
Didn't people already spend money sponsoring it?
To pay for the product that went in there, yes.
For the company to defeat the year.
No, the, the problem, I say that somewhat sarcastically only because the problem that you learn when doing this is that every garden you put in, every location has a different deer impact. I mean, you can put in, I'm not trying to give excuses for people's design because I know some things were kind of crazy to begin with in terms of, but you can put in material that works everywhere else and just because of your particular herd of deer, the particular pressures that they're loading and so on, the impacts will be much different.
Yes. I've come to learn that.
And you can't predict. So that's why every year is an experiment in a sense. You can, you can sort of focus on core things that tend to be, but, um, several of the landscapers, and, and I, I, I can't tell you, I know this to be fact, but several of the landscapers have told us, there are now products that they use that are environmentally friendly that they've had tremendous impact with keeping deer away from places and properties they're responsible for. So we're hoping that, that with the fencing that we've put up and with this, these products that we're going to be able to do a better job. A spray, you mean, or?
We could, uh.
Coyote. Uh, I, I don't remember the type of product, Mark. I will get the name. That was, there was actually multiple brands that were meant to us, so.
Cause there are some things that the trade uses a lot for larger, uh, properties.
So I, I mean, I do think that, I think we also need to get, get the, get the gardens up to speed again. Uh, hopefully more simplified with the goal of making it easier to maintain. Even if, you know, no one takes any interest in it, we can kind of have the laborer and, you know, some part-time staff take care of it. Um, and to think, I think to kind of move the discussion along, uh, because I think we can talk about the nature center a lot and I'm guessing that after you try this again, we will be talking about it quite a bit. Um, that, uh, you know, maybe for, you know, and Larry, Brent, I want you to be comfortable with this, if we, if we change the kind of recurring piece to, to 10,000, reduce the line to 25 to 10, and then anticipate it costing somewhere between 18 and 25, whatever the difference is, is we just kind of make up for it in contingency since it's an non-recurring fee. I think that, that makes sense, uh, then it also helps us with our budget, so.
Well, I like the, from the point of view that you leave some money in on a continuing basis because I think that there's.
Cause you're going to need, you're going to target.
You can't have decent garden.
And we don't know if 10 is the right number, but we'll start with that for now as a recurring.
So what number are you giving me to award, to recommend in an award?
It can still be up to the 25.
It can, okay.
But it's just going to be out of contingency rather than recurring budget. I mean, we'd rather it be 18.
We can trust you just to go. Well, listen, I, I'd love, Mark, to take a look at the bids when they come in and see what his thoughts are on them. And again, I've got Nikki and the committee and Lucille, so we've got some good eyes looking at it.
Especially if you have a copy.
Sure.
Especially if you know the scope is to simplify some too.
And that's in the, it's going to be simplified.
I'm sorry.
What I keep trying to get to, so in the RFP, it's going to be to simplify the scope or the complexity? I'm not quite sure what the right word is, huh?
There's a, okay. There's a, a major spring cleanup for the entire site, for all of the gardens. Once they get past that, then depending on which bid we pick, it could be, uh, they would come in bi-weekly or bi-monthly, um, which could be a little bit different. And they'd have certain work they'd have to do. And then Lucille would continue to work with us with the committee. And as we evaluate each garden, we start determining what has to come out of there. What, what stays, what goes.
I don't think that would add anything to the cost from the, the, the whole point.
Can I suggest something just a little short? Can you leverage off if it's a, let's say it's a business like one of the well-known, um, uh, landscaping companies that have no native plants and stuff like that? Is there any kind of leverage you could give them? A way to, uh, put a sign up, uh, you know, put up material that.
Absolutely.
So that you can, so you could, uh, work back on one of some free advertising, maybe save five to 10 grand?
We, we told them, we, we're planning. Right. We're planning to tell the individual that the entire community will look at the success they have with these gardens and that any resident who comes up here and sees something they like and asks we did it, you know, we're going to give them an opportunity to be front and center. And, and that should be, you know, something that would benefit them a great deal.
Could even like maintain my little signs that are stuck in the garden.
I certainly think, uh, if we're really close to the number that we want to be, you know, on the, on the, in the negotiation of the, of the bid, it's certainly something to throw out there and then.
As an example, the native plant center, we've asked them if they could see using one of the gardens as a teaching vehicle for them. Cause they give classes on different things and we, we offered them to consider taking one of the gardens. They agreed to maintain it, but then they could also use it as a teaching vehicle for what they do out over at Westchester Community College, so.
Did it like that idea or is it too?
There, there, it wasn't, there wasn't a no. I think the way we're going to start with them to develop our relationship is they're going to offer some tours in the woods, using the nature center as their starting point and then taking people out to try to get more people up there to get more involved. And we're going to continue negotiations with them.
Cause we've also looked at those gardens from a native, uh, plant, you know, perspective. So what we had should be very, you know, very, uh, interesting to have here.
Is there, um, is there a commitment on the part of the village from the original folks who sponsored these to keep them as separate entities? Four or five, I can't remember.
There's Zerasteh Garden, a bird, bee and butterfly, which is two. Edible garden, which is three. Shade garden, which is four. The bough garden, which is five. Two rain gardens, six and seven. And then there's what we call the foundation plantings, which are all of the wild grasses in the front of the building and others, some other small things. We basically have seven.
Was there a commitment that we have to maintain these separate entities? If we're talking about simplification, you probably figure where I'm going with this.
Right.
Do we have to have that structure of all those separate entities?
Well, I, I know the woods committee feels that what we have is what we should represent. Getting them to the right point of being, you know, representative of that is what we haven't been able to do. I think they feel the Zerasteh Garden really does teach people about a different way of doing things. Uh, the edible garden, you know, it speaks for itself why you'd want to have people.
Well, the deer love it.
Well, but that, that one's pretty well fenced. That's a Fort Knox, actually.
Take it in there to deserve it.
Yeah.
You were original, I mean, were you, you know, did you, was the expectation that they'd always be entities as they were originally?
I didn't get it before.
Okay. I'm just, I would just ask you.
Well, I think we feel responsible to what we sold people at the opening of the nature center, that this is what, this is what our, our mission was. Our mission really hasn't changed. So, you know, I, I, that's why I think we're hanging in there is because we feel we have a responsibility to those people to try to make this work within reason. And I, I still think we're in that within reason period. Um, I need more people from the community involved. The eight new members is the first good step we've seen on that.
But that'll almost be your answer. If people are not willing to step up to this.
That's right.
If people are not willing to involve themselves, then you've got your answer.
That's right.
Swag, you need swag too.
I mean, they're.
You're right. No, I'm serious about it, you know, like, like we gave the, the kid who did all the work.
Like, uh, O'Hare, uh, nature center.
Maintenance group, you know.
At the wine and cheese party, 25 bucks and you'll buy it. I'm well offered to help you do a pig roast.
How you talking next?
To finish my thought about that.
That's a fun question.
It is.
Mark, just to finish my thought about that, you know, and I don't claim to be the expert in this, and I'm sure the woods committee and all these people you've talked to have a great deal to say and think about this, but in the, in the long range in turn of our commitment to budget, if the word simplification is part of this and the writing on the wall over this next year is, um, we really have to keep this landscaper number down and we're not seeing, although there's a lot of talk and interest and, but when somebody is asked to, to take a role or get, you know, actually do some of these things or take, that it's not there, then I would say part of simplification consideration should be something that is really low maintenance, that isn't edible by, um, anybody's standards. And then you, yes, only five deer.
I won't say this out loud, but I dreamed of all the gardens being grass.
Well, I, I would say ground cover.
Certain kind of garden.
Ground cover or sand, you know.
You don't want to have to.
I, I would say grasses or the meadow, um, that is just what it is.
Well, I have to tell you, just, you know, meadows, if you really have meadows, you know, they actually take a.
Okay. Get them. I can stand.
Yes.
Pakistan. Pakistan. So it could be lovely, but not as complicated. And if every year the same number of eighth graders put their hands up and say, I have never been here, then, you know, we have a lot more to think about, about how this goes forward. I know we're committed to having a nature center by the arrangement originally with the.
It is.
So, but it could be, it could be a whole different concept.
There may have to be a new discussion.
Yes.
There's, there's no question. And again, I, I, as much as it hurts me to say that, um, for nothing else, just because of my feelings for the O'Hare family, there may be a time where we just cannot do this. It's, it's a reality. It really is.
I, I just.
Yeah, it's very expensive. And, and again, remember, you know, I, I'd love to beat a dead horse, but when you put the nature center under us and we went forward, we never changed manpower.
Yeah. See, this is kind of what I'm speaking to. So I'm, I'm just saying, you know, when we're here next year, I, I feel like, you know, I think, I don't know if I'm just speaking for myself, but, um, to have a, a clear message that we need to take a bigger change after maybe this year, I know the year is a good kind of marker, to think about, um, a sustainable future, uh, in terms of finances for this.
I think the challenge I asked the board to accept is to let Nikki and representatives from the woods committee, along with, uh, RPAC, our representation come back in September after we've gone through and see, because that's the time to evaluate what, if what we did worked.
There we go.
Right. Because we're not going to learn much next November, December and January as we get ready for the budget, but at the end of September, we're going to know, have we had an impact? Did this work? You know, what are we going to think about for next year? That's the time for all of us to take a step back and say, this isn't working. Or you know what? We got, we got.
That would be a good commitment. That would help me with this expenditure now, to know that we are seriously looking at a change. Because, you know, we've been here on the board since the beginning of this and I'm always excited. I mean, I, I, I love it. I love the architecture. I love the rocks, but we have to rethink it.
Right. The fact that more people are using it is a good thing too. But the part that we have to get over and you have more lights in the building is one of the things that became clear when we were polling people who were up there last year is that eight out of 10 people were there for the trails. And then even though the gardens were part of the thing, we have to change that thing.
Well, I mean, I guess the thing is that. What's the, I'm sorry, how big is the?
Are the gardens?
The whole property.
Well, the whole property is 400 acres. Correct. Then we're, the nature center, which we are, we've just, um, agreed to have a survey done because we never had a final as-built of the project when it happened. Um, I, I'm going to say the upper area.
The upper is half an acre.
Okay. I was going to say a little more than that, but he knows better.
Well, that's what I recall.
The only thing we also have that can come in, because it's kind of in the back, is we do have a deer exposure, which is to try to show what things would grow if you didn't have deer. And, um-
That was successful.
If people find it interesting.
That's where you can get it.
It's very easy.
You know, just, just as an aside thing up there that I think is the most dramatic are the rocks.
Yep.
The rocks are great. I mean, they don't take a lot of maintenance. They're very interesting. They're educational. There's a lot about geology.
Joe sold me some of them.
A lot of rocks.
So a card economy saying is we're good at rocks.
It's good at rocks. You can rock, but it-
Don't call them Mount Leota.
The price is right, is what I'm saying. And the educational factor is still there. Um, and if the simplicity and maintenance and expense of it has a lot to do with the gardens, then we need to, we just need to think about that as our responsibility here.
I think what I was trying to say earlier was, I think, one of the things that gives me, uh, a positive outlook is all the ideas that Joe and the Woods Committee have been, that you've presented in terms of trying to get, uh, use of the facility. Now, not all of those will be revenue uses, but just the idea of having it become a key, uh, an integral part to, uh, you know, the community, which has always been a goal, educational functions of, uh, in various forms. That's very important.
It is. And it's an example, Mark. You're right. Not everyone will be a generate, will generate revenue, but for as an example, you're up there with your child, because you're in a program, and you find out we can rent it, and next month you're a rental for us. So there's other ways to connect it. And because, just to show you how wide a range of things we're considering, we had our first briffs held at the nature center.
Thought about it.
Wow.
Okay, so Larry, uh, several of the board members are parked in the towaway zone out in front?
Yeah.
Not, sorry, not PM?
Yeah.
I think we should call the police department and tell them that we're trying to-
What should we do? Be done.
Well, I think, as far as the budget, I think, I think-
Fireworks are out.
Fireworks are out.
Garden, I have up to twenty-five.
But, but the, the line's going to show.
The line's coming out of contingency.
The line will show ten.
The rest will come from contingency.
And thank you very much for the other part of the budget. The need for the budget was fantastic that we didn't have to, or go through that, weed it up. We appreciate you coming in and, you know, looking to increase revenue where you can. Thirty-five thousand in visual revenues is real.
Is huge.
Uh, and, and, you know, and you're eliminating costs as well. It's great.
So I want to thank you, and I want to thank all of our PACs for coming and working hard on this. I know I've heard your work on this thing.
Can I just ask you a question? As a member of the FACE committee and from a PR perspective, what type of announcement is going to come from the village regarding the fact that there are no fireworks needed?
I'm going to be sending out, well, we, we present our budget on Monday.
Okay.
Um, I'll probably, it does, I'll probably send a, we'll have my letter with the budget, and I'll probably send out something out last that'll talk about the things that are related. Um, the presenting budget is the final budget. Um, so people can move back and, and yell and scream, and we can add things back in, we can take other things out. Um, so, you know.
Well, it shouldn't look necessarily, Brian, that you guys are cutting it necessarily. Again, it was a combination of it being funded previously by Parker and his group, and then by FACE.
Yeah, and I think that's going to be the challenge.
Now that it's not happening.
If someone else wants to try to raise money for it.
But that presents a PR perspective for FACE that I think the FACE chairperson should be involved in and, you know.
Because I don't think FACE at any point is saying they don't want to help pay for the fireworks. What FACE is saying is to allow us to run a budget like this, they want to be in a position where if we need money to help pay for a team trip or for a scholarship, they think those things are more important for the money they raise. And since they haven't made the type of money they did in their first few years, they just, in terms of aligning priority, Janet and Rick, please tell me if you think I'm wrong, in terms of priority, the fireworks went to the, to the bottom because they would rather fund a scholarship for summer camp than pay money for the fireworks.
And I think that's, I think we should also, I think I'd like to meet with FACE and discuss. To me, it was more for community events than scholarships, because I think having a separate group that raised scholarship money wouldn't be hard to do either. So I think that there's been a little bit of a disconnect on, on some of that. So I, I think that's a side meeting.
Yeah, it could be more for collaboration and asking.
I'm making a mistake. Most of what we, we spend money is on projects.
Yeah. Remember, we got spoiled that first year. You know, we saw we were going to make three or four thousand dollars, and they gave a check for a hundred and thirty-six. We paid for a lot of stuff.
Yeah, yes, I have like, uh, five or six ideas as well.
Okay.
Some including the nature center.
But I think Janet brought up an important point. FACE has been a, FACE has been a, an amazing partner, and, you know, you created it. Um, and it's been critical to us being as solid as I think we are right now. So I'd ask that that conversation with, with you and, and the committee happen, because I hate that we all don't keep working together to find ways to do everything.
Without a doubt, it might be great to do so. I just, I would, once a, of course, Spring Fest. Well, yes, the Spring Fest is slated for May twentieth. And so, again, I just would need to see, Brian, you reach out and say, "We need help raising money, potentially for fun, for fireworks," and it not be somehow connected to FACE. So it's not like FACE is saying turning their back on fireworks, but I think there could be some type of collaboration where FACE just physically can't fund the whole thing anymore. But I, I'd love to, again, somehow work together. I don't want to see another divide, another group raising money, raising money, you know?
So, I have a nice budget summary. I'll hopefully present to everyone. If you guys forgot this one.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Armand.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
I have an idea for-
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
So, I think, uh, I bet you're still saving, I think, just almost, almost sixty-one thousand in savings. Sixty-one? Yep, exactly right. So it's, it's eighteen thousand five hundred in savings. I'll give you a quick one. Two hundred and fifty for supplies. That's eighteen thousand seven fifty. Fifteen hundred for the ECA elimination.
I'm taking it.
Two thousand off the traffic safety. Uh, twenty-four thousand five hundred for fireworks. And fifteen thousand for the landscaper that will be continued. Sixty-one, seven fifty. And if you, if you can look at revenue and get that up to, you know, twenty, then we get our E one, which is right where we count them on.
Yeah, we're moving.
And Mark, thank you for thinking this way, this ability to work in here. That's the nature.
That was a great one.
The nature booth.
No, I mean, not that it was happy.
We're in a standing room there, but I think we-
You're going to use it as media.
Kick out.
Okay.
So that goes into the thing that's the, the, whatever you call it on Monday, the, what's the name of that one?
The, um, tentative project.
The tentative. All right. It's just still tentative and then people just-
We have project hearings.
Right.
Did the heat ever go on in campus?
It's, it's, it's-
Third would be the public hearing with the public weighing in on it.
Sixty-eight.
So it's not over until it's over.
Yeah, right.
But it's, it's in a way like this.
Your email can also-
It's adorable.
When you tell them that fireworks are out, you may also want to give people an opportunity.
Yes, absolutely.
Are we off of the thing then?
No, there's only one more item, unfortunately.
Yeah. And then, so I'll put this together, redo it, and I'll do maybe an outline of some points.
Not finished.
You two carry the car?
Nobody gets tickets on it.
At the school?
Well, I want to know where they park.
Where we're parked.
Where are you parked?
On Main Street.
I'm parked by Zarella's.
And I'm parked in front of the school.
In front of the school.
I'm parked in front of the school. But I thought that was nine AM to something.
Yeah, it's six AM.
Okay.
They all just got to it already. They had fifteen trucks lined up.
Well, there was no, there was no stoplight. Well, you know what, Scott?
It's nine o'clock now. Well, that's where you just tell the front desk, "How long we're here?"
Wait, wait, finish up the question.
Okay.
You were talking about schedule and all that.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Well, I was like, geez, I walked into the school parking lot because I didn't want to walk in.
I thought we'd be done by-
That's why you were late.
That's, that's why I came late, because I-
We were saying, I was saying, okay, I'm, this changes tomorrow, and then we'll do a framework of some things for the, um, message, the budget message, and then I'll send it to you, Brian, to take a look at, to personalize it.
Great. Perfect. Great job at that, uh-
Can I just suggest that we not emphasize that we took certain things out of the budget this time, just except for the fireworks? I think it's the only one that really has to be itemized as a specific item, publicly.
We did, although, we did talk about publicly denied, but-
Yeah, I think we shouldn't say that we, it wasn't a class savings, and we looked at places where we could-
Yeah, 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 but I'm just saying, supposed to, I advise everything.
Yeah, it'd be a generic message about, we get things we've wanted to use in the previous year.
Yeah, we don't want to, yeah.
We eliminated.
Well, it wasn't have to eliminate. It was never put in. It was requested to please add it, but it's not taking anything from something that you didn't have.
Right.
You don't take, you don't remove it. It's not-
Yeah, I understand. I'll work on the message.
So, and what is the cap percentage? Once we get to, to zero or, you know, once we get to zero, what's the cap number?
Oh, so it's actually, you mean, what is our front tax increase kind of thing, or the, the levy increase?
Well, what's the levy and what's our?
Well, if we take out, uh, if we take out E one, I hope, I'm just going to take that out of the number. So you want to, on this piece here?
Right. Well, I was going to say, if we took out that, what did we get? That got us to exactly zero on the cap.
But then we would have-
That's right.
Then we'd have all forty out of next year. So we'll have forty thousand roll over left on next year.
Yeah, so this number, that seventy-nine, will be about forty next year.
Correct.
Right.
So that's, then if I look at this number.
Right, and what percentage is that?
That's going to be what, one dot?
The new, the new rate would be seventy, we're rounding it seven dot eighty-two instead of seven dot eighty-six.
You mean four thousand you're talking here? Oh, I think you meant third, a percent increase of the, of the cap.
Yes. That's right, it's number, percent.
So two point five percent.
Two point five.
Yeah.
It's a miracle.
It's a tax rate increase.
I don't know how you guys did this in the past.
Smoke and mirrors.
Well, when you, when you have sound, you know, when you have that first number of four hundred thousand dollars, and then they say you can only raise a three hundred each.
No, it's, this is something on here. We've been saying that this-
I don't really understand.
One big item that we didn't have in the past that we added this year, Larry and I, was an eighty thousand dollar increase of appropriate fund balance from our debt service fund. And what that is, is when we close out projects, sometimes there's an unexpended amount that we transfer to debt service. We have some substantially large, um, surpluses left in the past year, a year or two, and that's accumulated to, it's a very substantial amount of money. It's five hundred thousand. So what we're doing is we're appropriating that over the next five years to draw that down, but to offset, yeah.
So we would have been eighty thousand dollars worse.
That's worth looking for eighty thousand more.
Right. Fuck. Sorry.
So-
Are we still on?
Are you telling?
Way high.
Oh.
All right. This is a very quick-
Dare make fun of this.
Don't want to get far.
You're a dare.
I'll let you know when I have to.
Will you supply a jetty to us?
Yeah, exactly.
Is this new from what we have seen?
No, 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 this is an update from the rest of the board, so you're, you're going to be bored by this.
We know.
Oh, so you want to go now?
You can work your way. No, you're not starting work. You're not starting work until eleven. So-
Oh.
So you said in two hours, you're way high.
Woo!
To get you, uh-
Motivated.
I can't tell you, I, I would- We spent over two, we spent about four, five hours on this.
Mark and I have spent, and Larry has spent even more, but, yeah, we, we've put our heart and soul into this. Not, not the design per se, but-
Okay, so-
There's more to it.
So we explain what you're looking at there. Um, these are, these were the original, uh, design options that were given to us by our design, design team, design firm. Um, I can tell you right now, none of them reflect, uh, what we think the final design will be, or even the next preliminary design that we expect to get. We haven't gotten it yet. Uh, we, we basically gave them feedback on all of these designs and kind of highlighted the things that we liked, things that we didn't like. It was really a sound board opportunity so they could understand what we're interested in. So, you know, when you look at certain of these designs, you know, for example, uh, number three, um, you know, that's a much more modern look of design. We gave them feedback on that. That's, nothing's going to really look like that, I'm guessing, but it wasn't one of the chosen ones. But, you know, there's, there's other, other elements from, from some of these that, um, that we liked. Um, so obviously, when that comes in, you'll see it, but, uh, I just wanted to give you an idea of the types of things that we're looking at. So that's, each of these pages gives you an example of an element that they're designing. So going from left to right, just on that first page, for example, you have, uh, what could be a directional marker on the old Crooknap Aqueduct Trail. Uh, the next one over might be a, where it says Irvington Historical Site, might be a, um, a landmark, like a marker, identifying a building. Um, obviously, bulletin board. Um, the next sign over might be a regular pedestrian sign. It might be located on Main Street or, or, uh, in, in the Main Street area especially. Next one, which is a larger sign, of course, is a vehicle type sign. And then the one on the right is just a simple gateway sign. But again, none of the, none of these designs are accurate, but these are the types of directional signage that they're, that they're, that they're working on. Um, to give you an idea of the things that we're looking at, we've, um, this is just by example, not, not final, anything. Oh, yes.
It's like a bad dream.
Mark, come on.
So, again, the designers, um, gave us basically six or, or more of these, actually more, of these types of maps. They divided the village up into sections, and they designated in a certain key here where certain types of signage would go. Um, and we, we spent hours going through, um, the, their recommendations for where signs could go. And then the harder part then is seeing what's actually printed on those signs and understanding, you know, making, having it all make sense. So you have elements such as bulletin boards, you have vehicular signs, you have, uh, you know, ID signs that show you where, maybe see the Cuts and Park is, or where the Senior Center is, things like that. You have signs along the trailway, uh, which are walking trail signs. Uh, you might have interpretive signage, which really didn't go into how, what the wording would be, but you might have a sign near the Odell Tavern. You have a sign near the Octagon House, or at least on the trail where, near where the Octagon House is, um, Gil Loeiro, things like that. Um, and then, so we took these maps and not only figured out and, and really gave them feedback on the locations, potential locations for these signs, but then all of these signs, and this is just one page, this, this document's probably about fifteen or twenty pages long, full document. Um, all of these signs are then keyed to a, uh, to a spreadsheet like this, which has, uh, an indication of where, exactly where the sign is and, uh, and what the sign would say. Um, and I'm, I'm not going to dive into it, but you can see, you know, a vehicular sign on, uh, North Broadway as you approach Main Street would have, which is like sign V five and V five A, uh, would have a sign that shows you that Main Street is coming and that the train is down the hill, and, and there might be other things, sort of library, things like that. So, uh, I mean, that's a particularly busy intersection, but, so that, um, that exercise, like I said, probably took a total of five hours, really, but in two, in a two-day chunk, um, we provided them with feedback on all this. We're expecting, um, a revised, uh, information from the designer. They should be coming up, I think, next week, possibly.
Yeah, definitely.
It's coming up twenty-third, brings it up, but maybe it's later, maybe it's a weekly area. And, uh, and they'll be going, yeah, so they'll be going through the, the details of, you know, based on the feedback given. So, at the end of the day, um, you know, we're getting closer to, to having a full package here. Um, you know, what we do with it after this, this is just a design, so what we do with it after is, is up to us, and we'll have to see. But I think it's, it's important because it'll, it'll be used, if we do settle on a, on a good design here, it'll be used in the, uh, Aqueduct Crossing project, it'll be used in the, uh, Town Hall Theater Plaza out here project, um, and wherever else we can afford to put things at this point, so.
And I thought one of the interesting things was, too, we had a lot of discussion about, um, traffic flow.
Yeah.
And we had the discussion between a visitor versus a resident, and, you know, who is the, certain types of signage is for who, and so on. So we did sort of regularize, uh, you know, if you had a visitor, probably the, the two roads you'd want to go to the train station is either Station Road or Main Street. Station Road, you'd go down to South Buckout and down Astro Street, rather than going down South Buckout to, uh, through the narrow section where people get their cars swiped, side swiped and so, and so forth.
Right, so if you make it one way, if you make it one way going that way, that prevents-
Well, but even here, the sign, the point is the sign here tells you, tells the visitor to go down Astro Street.
Even though you could go that way, you wouldn't know you could go that way.
Tells you, hey, tell you.
Visitors go this way. Risk the fact of residents saying, "I'm out of their mind. Why would I do that?"
But it's actually easier to get to the train by going down Astro than try to make-
But anyways, the point is you're trying to, the wayfarer signage is not disliked for residents.
Yeah, I mean, you can put a, you can put a sign up at, uh, I mean, let's, let's say you decided that it's better for people to go down West Clinton instead of the train station, right? No, I'm not saying that's true, but let's say you decided that.
You put a train sign.
You can put a sign at West Clinton that says, "Train, you know, Metro North this
You can put a sign at West Clinton that says, "Train, you know, Metro North this way." There's not one resident's going to go that way, if they don't already. You know what I mean? It's, it doesn't mean they can't, it, it... So, so sign is, it has limited, it has limited impact on...
We use Google Maps.
But we're not going to get a whole lot of visitors who are going to come here to take the train.
No, I know.
Right. We want to also just make sure we're not looking like complete idiots at how we're directing people. You know, where visitors likely want to go.
Well, that's the whole, we've had that whole discussion.
Very, you are like, you are three very smart people. It was, um...
We got to a rhythm after a while, but it was interesting. But the, so the trail markers are going to be the interesting part because I, we, um, we do need to, to check with the Parks Department, the R State Parks Department, to make sure that they're, they will allow these types of trail markers on the trail. And if so, can it be our design, or do they have to somehow be their design? So, that's an interesting open point. But, oh, we did spend time to actually design them and get the right wording on them.
Yeah, and if they're at the, if they're at the streets, then that's fine.
Oh, that's fine.
Then they cross, from the act that crosses.
The actual direction of, like, where you're walking on the trail and it says, you know, Tarrytown or Lindhurst Street, you know, Sunnyside Left, you know what I mean? That's those types of signs.
It certainly provides the blueprint for chunks by chunks of, of being able to do this as funds become available. But it'll be a consistent, um, book, and it will go with the two projects we know that are going forward right now. And that's part of the funding of it, is it, or for those two projects, so...
And we'll be ready to go for anything else that...
Yeah, and some of this, and right, some of this we are funding for already.
Yes, right.
Because of the two projects.
Relatively small, yeah, relatively small enough.
Yeah, so, um...
Let's use a judicial sorting.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would, yeah.
There have been corrections to this material, so if, I wouldn't look at it too closely because we've already come...
Okay, no, these were just...
Don't let, don't let somebody, don't show this to somebody and have them say, "I hate this. Don't do this." Because it's not any one of these anyway. It's a mountain of it.
No, I think that, well, that's...
Look, have a...
Adjourned.
Second.